Guys know me, my name is Dan Towne, Academic Accreditation Liaison Officer, Michael Youngs, the current Chair of the Assessment Committee, past Chair for that matter. So we're going to walk you through some of the the highlights of assessment from the 2324 academic year. I'm going to do a little bit of an introduction with pressure. Mike's going to walk you through some of the course and the program assessment, some highlights there, and then I'll do some highlights of program and departmental and institutional assessment. So yeah, go for it. So just some notes from this year. Weave software, which we purchased about a year ago. It's an assessment, web-based assessment software program. We've been really using that, especially one side of the house right now, the student affairs side of the house, using Weave to collect assessment data. We also have a new six-year program review model that's come into effect this year, but it was actually approved through the 2524 academic year. The new institutional learning outcomes, and we should probably stop calling these new because they're in effect. The reason that that note is up here now is that we are in the process of assessing the first ILO in that new set of learning outcomes. And then, of course, middle states re-accreditation, which I'll hold to the regular spot in the agenda when we talk about accreditation soon. That slide? You've probably seen this slide before. This is just a reminder how assessment happens at FMCC. It's not a bottom-up or a bottom or a top-down model. Of course, in initiatives, kind of the base of assessment here, programs and departments and/or divisions, and then institutional assessment at the top. So learning outcomes, institutional learning outcomes, program learning outcomes, course learning outcomes. And then on the other side, in the departmental areas, effectiveness and, of course, institutional effectiveness as well. So I'll turn it over to Mike for some course level?
Yeah, again, I'm Mike Youngs, and thanks for having me and Dan, of course. I teach English and Chair of the Assessment Committee. So I just want to talk a little bit about course and program level assessments on the academic side. This is going to be a little bit of a snapshot of some of the activities that took place data collection wise over the 2324 academic year and reporting wise in the fall of 24. So this is by no means an exhaustive look at all of the assessment activities that take place on campus, but just again, a little bit of a snapshot so you can see an example. So in our course assessment category, single courses or units of courses that might have multiple sections, an example that we pulled from the Human Services 212 Mental Health Services course. This assessment will be done by looking at the key assessment results based on what we call CLOs, those are course learning outcomes. The course learning outcomes in this course had four categories, mental health and addiction services, stages of mental health services, diagnostic criterion tools, and then client engagement, treatment, and termination. And then the assessment results concerning student learning showed that, you can see here, these are pretty good results, that the vast, vast majority of students in that course during fall '23 exceeded the expectations. Usually, we have either three or four categories of expectations exceeds, meets, sometimes approaches, and then does not meet. So this course was very successful. Innovative approaches were identified in terms of students having sort of ownership over the syllabus, and that led to high attendance and engagement, which, you know, usually leads to high performance. And most importantly, with assessment results, when it comes to our analysis, when it comes to courses and programs, our action plans, right? What are we going to take from this assessment and do for the future? What will we change? What will we continue? And in this case, it was found that these behavioral health labs for hands-on experience led to the very, very good results here. So continue that. And then maintaining, again, a trauma-informed pedagogy, which also led to these very impressive results here. On the program level side, we have just an example of the Health Studies Program Assessment from 2324. In this cycle, there was one program's learning outcome assessed. In this case, it was students will demonstrate communication, problem-solving, and critical thinking skills in healthcare. So these were broken down through three different courses, HLT 101, 120, and 201. And for each of these categories, problem-solving, solving, critical thinking, written communication, oral communication, the program used nationally-developed rubrics that broke down each one of these categories into multiple criteria. So again, the assessment results found that within problem-solving, within the range of the criteria, between 70 and 72.5% of the students met or exceeded expectations, and critical thinking, 72.5%. In written communication, 72 and a half to 77%, and in oral communication, 77%. So given their benchmarks, this was also a successful assessment. The results were successful as. Some of the key takeaways from this, again, action plans. What do we do for the future, right? Is this strong performance? Was, you know, this result yielded strong performance? Here's something important that I, you know, when I look at assessment, I like to see is this was compared to the previous assessment. Assessments are generally course-program on, you know, cyclical analysis. So of course, individual course or a program learning outcome will be assessed on a three-year cycle. They compared the previous three-year report and found that there was improvement based on some of the action plans. So again, that's something we really want to see in assessment. And then again, the next steps, the action plan maintains some of the current practices to keep this good trend going. So that's just a little bit about course level and program level assessment. And again, just a small snapshot.
Am I doing slides for him?
Yep.
So Mike just mentioned that that was an annual assessment report. Just a reminder that programs also go through a six-year review. So 2324, the Business Division actually did their six-year program assessments program reviews. And we bring up both the annual assessment and the six-year program review because, as I mentioned earlier, go ahead and take a slide. Last year, a new six-year cycle was proposed for programs and ultimately approved for programs. So instead of programs in '24, '25 going forward, doing an annual, like Mike had highlighted, program assessment. Program assessments are going to happen three times in a six-year cycle, okay? While all the while through that six-year review cycle, you can see in the yellow that course assessments are still happening, that different program learning outcomes being assessed through the three different program assessments. And then that all would kind of feed into or does feed into that six-year program review. Suggested by faculty member, brought to the Assessment Committee, brought to the College Assembly. One key driver of this was when annual assessment reports were being conducted, it was noted that year-over-year, those reports weren't changing a lot. So instead of having them do the same thing over and over again, you had a little more chance for some data to change, you know, in a two, possibly a two-year cycle. But again, all feeding back into a six-year program review and all still supporting the idea of mature assessment. Like Mike had mentioned, seeing a course or a program, of course, assessed three years ago and then assessed later on in a cycle. So. So just a couple of things at the departmental level. We talked about the academic side of the house, just measuring some effectiveness. A couple of examples with retention. And I mentioned Weave, so this is kind of what these reports look like in Weave now. They're much neater, present themselves better than possibly on an Excel spreadsheet or in a Word document. So our retention folks wanted, one of their goals streamlined the probation process, okay? Wanted to help students learn how to create a success plan, and they would measure that by students developing a success plan, students that were on academic probation, that is, set a benchmark, so they wanted half of those students to actually create one of those plans and then achieve, at least meet their benchmark goal or maybe exceeded it by a little bit. And then some analysis and findings about, you know, what that means, how that was accomplished. And then, of course, like Mike said, an action plan, how they could move, how they could continue the momentum and move forward. And then a second example of a assessment on the departmental level. Go ahead. So step program and their unit goal to develop problem-solving analytical tools, tool, skills related to STEM fields. Their unit goal, what they were wanting to do. So an after-school program on campus with faculty. Then how they're going to measure it. So they had two faculty members prior to the 202324 year. They wanted to increase that participation. And then in the benchmark, the criteria for success, they defined how they were going to do that. And then some results here. They actually brought in 12 different faculty members. And so they increased by about 200%. But when you're going from two to 12, a number like that is a little bit, I guess, maybe misleading, but good results nonetheless. So. At the institutional level, like I mentioned, the new ILOs approved in 2023. So this is the first year that we're actually assessing them. And there was a student, SUNY-wide student satisfaction survey conducted in the spring of 2024. And then, like I said, middle states to come later in the program. So these are on the right-hand side of the current institutional learning outcomes. And the one in the middle highlighted analyzed qualitative and quantitative is the ILO that we're actually assessing right now. And I highlighted this academic programs engaging co-curricular activities and supportive campus resources to highlight that achieving a learning outcome, a learning institutional outcome, institutional learning outcome doesn't only happen in the classroom. Okay, it can happen through their activities. It can happen through the financial aid department. So if you go ahead, Mike. So again, analyzing qualitative and quantitative information before making decisions. Subcommittee has been formed at an initial meeting in December of 2024. There's actually a form for the collection of data that that Subcommittee has created, and that data collection is happening now. There'll be a follow-up meeting to be scheduled soon, probably a meeting or two to, A, discuss the data collected, and then to analyze that data and assess that data. What does it mean, all in those same vein of these other assessments that you see? You know, what's the data, what's it telling us? And what are we going to do based on that data moving forward? And then finally, a SUNY satisfaction, student satisfaction survey conducted in March of 2024. Use this 2024 data to compare the data to the last survey administered in the spring of 2021. That survey was during COVID, the COVID pandemic, so pandemic. So that survey included a section specific on online learning environments, and that section was replaced with a facility. So instead of being out there on the internet, they changed it with, okay, what's going on in facilities in your campus? Goal to evaluate is you see program services and facilities and allow campus and system administrators to identify areas of strengths as well as areas that we can improve upon. And there's a lot of good data to dig into with this survey. Eight sections of the survey were categorized as one of 10 small campus community colleges. So the data will compare four-year to two-year. It will compare two years, the small community colleges, to other two years. And then there's specific campus data that's available as well. So. Response rate across SUNY decreased by just over 3%. But our student participation increased almost by 1%. So we actually, you know, did a little bit better as far as participation goes than the SUNY trend. However, the number of responses for our campus was insufficient to achieve a confidence level to say like, okay, that data is statistically valid, meaningful, right? We needed about 200 more responses to make, to meet that benchmark. But the information is still informative. And it's still information that we can dig into and possibly come up with some opportunities to do some different things on campus. So. I think that's, oh, and then the top five and bottom five set of results for our campuses. And the bottom five are kind of covered. So we'll focus on the top five.
I can minimize that?
Yeah. So the top five mean responses, okay? So this is on the scale of one to five. Our students are all attending their classes. They all submit their assignments on time. But some of these other ones that kind of, you know, they feel like they're being intellectually engaged. Differences, individual differences are accepted on campus, and acts of prejudice based race on race are rare at the college. So again, based on a scale of one to five, so a percent change. A couple of, three of them went up, a couple of them went down slightly. But the subsector ranking is where we rank in those 10 small community college campuses. So as far as, you know, out of 10 campuses, our students of those 10 campuses feel like they're most intellectually engaged out of that group of 10 campuses. And then our lowest response rate were college food service, which on our campus probably isn't surprising. You know, we don't really have a robust food service program. Participation in community service or service learning activities. Independent, of course, or academic programs. So there definitely are some programs on campus. Human Services comes to mind, that has a lot of service learning. But our students either don't seek out or are not aware of the potential for community service. And then that would correlate with participated in community service as part of an academic program. Again, that number, I would expect to be a little bit higher. But to me, again, that seems a little bit low, but that's the way our students responded. And again, you know, not every student is taking a given services course. They don't like our parking facilities. And again, I would say along with food service, you know, the response rate from residence halls would be would be expectedly low, right? We don't really have residence halls that we participate in at. So. That is lots of, lots of activity in assessment over the past year, as you can see. So happy to take any, any questions on any of that?
Any questions? Dan?
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
It's fine. Move on with the public comment of the Union College. Hearing none, we'll move on to approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the January 16 movement. Motion by Type A, second. Second by Trustee Wilson. All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed. Hearing none, we'll move on to give approval of the minutes of the special meeting of January 27. Motion, motion by Trustee Schumer, I mean, B rather, second. Trustee Preston, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move on to Chair's report. Couple of things. We need somebody, used to have a person who was a liaison between the Board and NYCCT. And that last person, I believe, was Jeff Peck, and he moved on. So we need somebody who would want to volunteer as a liaison between the Board and the NYCCT. They have our Executive Board meeting on April 25, 25. So anybody here interested, any trustee interested in being a liaison? Okay. Mr. Preston, Trustee Preston, and we'll make notifications. And we'll give you your email and make you contact.
Sounds good.
Okay. The other thing we got is the Gulf Classic coming up, 31st Annual Gulf Classic. And trustees usually donate to a hall. Want to get ahead of it this year a little bit, ahead of time. We normally give, what, $35 a person? I think?
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So next meeting of, next meeting or two, get a donation of $35 trustee for a hall if all just want to do it. Who wants to? So.
I'm patient of myself, yeah.
Right. And then Board and Trustees' contact list. Does anybody have a current Board and Trustee contact list? With names and telephone numbers?
They should. Not I have that.
Okay, if you don't.
I'll mail it out to everyone.
Okay. So we all have one, current one of today. I did, I did test, attended a webinar, ACCP, and I know President Chuck Millis is going to talk about it a little bit. So with that, I'll move on to the President's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again. Our Phi Theta Kappa National Honor Society that we have on campus, we have historically done pretty well with that group. And once, once again, they have received special recognition for their recruitment and membership efforts. So they have what they call a REACH program. And when a chapter meets certain membership thresholds in recruiting new students into the Honor Society, they're recognized for that, and they receive some stoles that the students can wear at graduation. So again, our Honor Society continues to do good things. And later on, next month, at the end of next month, we'll have our spring induction ceremony. And when that's finalized, we'll make sure that you are all aware of it and invited to attend if you're able. As the Chair mentioned, there's been a flurry of executive orders flying out of the federal government. There are several that impact us as a community college directly. And at his place, you have slides from the ACCP presentation that was given yesterday. They also gave it to presidents a week or so ago. And so I'm not going to go into great detail about each one of these, but, but these are the programs that are the executive orders that have been identified as those that directly impact us and have implications for us as we move forward. And the first one is, is the, you know, see the title there. It essentially seeks to expand EBI programming, referencing. And there's, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot there rescinds some previous executive orders from not only the most recent administration, but going back as far as 1965. So there are, there's a lot to weigh through. And of course, most of these are facing legal challenges. And so while, you know, this is what we know today, tomorrow it may be different. What is particularly important about the first executive order is that it impacts, impacts us and our status as a contractor. And that applies when we talk about things like federal grants. We have several significant federal grant programs on the campus, some of which are in continuing status, some of which are ending this year. And we've applied for them to be renewed. And there are, at least as part of this executive order, new regulations that will be required of us if we chose to participate in those programs if those programs actually still exist. So that there is, there is that. The next one has to do with promoting women, gender ideology, extremism, et cetera. And that has some implications for for items that are actually in conflict with New York state law. So that's a full other issue. Then there's the ending of legal discrimination, restoring merit-based opportunity. And this, again, has a lot to do with pro-reaction and going back for the action programs. And, and again, this has a number of issues that are in conflict with New York state law and SUNY regulations. And then the final one is keeping men out of women's sports. And so those are things that we have to pay attention to. And, you know, there's a lot of, particularly the conflict between federal regulations and state law and SUNY policy. And because we're actually, you know, in a spot where we have to comply with laws from wherever they come. And so I've attended probably three, maybe four meetings over the, in the last two weeks with the SUNY Chancellor and SUNY staff. Their overall counsel to us is, you know, one of patience. Don't overreact, don't attempt to be proactive because you don't know, you know, you don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. SUNY Office General Counsel is closely monitoring these. They're working closely with New York State Attorney General's Office and the Governor's Office to determine if legal challenges are necessary. And one thing that's been, you know, underscored to us is that New York laws are still in effect, and we are still expected to comply with those laws. And there's been no rollback as SUNY board trustee policies. And there is an overall recognition that there may, in fact, be conflict with what's happening at the federal level. Regardless, we have to comply. Dan, Dan, I believe, is going to talk a little bit more about this in his remarks. But Middle States has recognized the challenging positions puts us in as well because, you know, they're evaluating us in certain standards, and they're trying to sort through, you know, what's happening with the federal level because that's where the charter comes from, is the federal government. That is the key for us to dispense Title 4A or federal financial aid. So we are kind of stuck in, you know, in a sticky. So we, we are kind of stuck in, you know, in a sticky web of, or perhaps more is a better analogy, just with, with these competing and conflicting laws and directives. So we're, we're, we're not expecting, you know, anyone to roll up in our vehicle and demand us to comply with this from either the state or the federal level. I'm not picking on one or the other. But it is.
It's limbo.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a challenging time to, the entire education.
I, I did, I did send it on the webinar and they're supposed to send it to me. And when they do, if I can, I'll send it to all the trustees. So it takes about an hour where they go through it, two attorneys. So even, they explain a lot of do's and don'ts.
Really interesting.
The one, the one kind of friction between what, what you hear from ACCP and, and SUNY is, you know, the attorneys were basically saying, these are, these are things you need to do. And SUNY's saying, slow down. You don't need to jump out in front of this and, and go be a trailblazer. So that's, that's kind of where we're going. I mean, there are some real implications for us. As I mentioned before, we have some grant applications for renewal for, for several significant sources of revenue for us. Given the nature of, of those programs and partners under which they sit, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know if they're just going to freeze those programs, if they're. We don't know. And so it has, it has a real impact on us. There's also the open question of the continuation funding for ongoing programs. We just received a Title III grant last year. We've seen the federal government canceling some contracts. That hasn't been the case in things like this, but, but certainly we'll be watching that closely because it does have very real consequences for us and our, and our resources. As we always do, we'll continue to look for ways to diversify our revenue and look for other grant programs as well. But, you know, if you consider something like TRIO, that's been a program that's been with us for, I think, almost, almost 20 years. And has, has provided some, some significant benefits to our students and to our, our campus. And we'd hate to see that program go away.
It's one of the ones they thought about.
Yep.
Rockin' hard, Bush.
Yeah, it, it makes it difficult. When we talked about the, the New York State budget outlook and our, and our own budget outlook, you know, we talked, last time in that, we talked a little bit about the governor's proposal and the implications of that. So we know that, you know, we're looking at some flat funding that comes to operating aid. Those of you who've been tuned into NYCCT, both the president's organization and NYCCT are asking for an additional $100 million in, in state aid for community colleges. And you should have received, and if, if not, I'll make sure that you get their, their advocacy piece that, that breaks down what that $100 million is for, which is really to support New York State's workforce agenda. It, it appears that SUNY is, is solidly aligned with the governor in their advocacy efforts, which means that they're not asking for that additional $100 million. So we don't necessarily have their support in that side. So that doesn't mean we're not going to ask and not get the, so those of you who, who have relationships with our local legislators, or our state legislators, please do what you can to advocate for community colleges. We are considering another modest tuition increase, just because, as you know, we have essentially three sources of revenue. State aid, county sponsor, support and tuition revenue. We know that the state's going to be flat. The sponsors have signaled that they're not necessarily in the state or have the appetite to increase our funding from the accounting perspective. So, you know, we may be looking at a, a, a non-tuition increase. And again, we don't want to be the market leader in terms of the cost in tuition. But we, we find ourselves constrained. And then, as I mentioned, you have the uncertainty with our federal grants, because that, that has been a very substantial source of revenue for us as well. This is the advocacy piece. You can't read it. I recognize you can't read it or see it from your, your, your place. But I'll make sure that if you didn't already get this from NYCCT, that if you didn't read it, I will, I will email that out to you. So you have it and can actually read what, what's written on the page. And then I just finally want to acknowledge Kevin Jones, who's our athletic director, our, our women's basketball coach, and now the NJCAA Region Three Women's Basketball All-Time Wins Record Holder. So congratulations to Kevin. He's a modest guy. He doesn't want a lot of publicity over this. He's embarrassed and mad at me for sharing this with anybody. But I told him, just wait till the billboards go up. So, you know, again, we want to congratulate Kevin. And at that point, at this point, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I've talked about. One final thing that I will say, and I don't think I'm stealing trustee Landry's thunder, but the, the bid award or the bid advertisement for the distribution, the Welcome Center Electrical Distribution Project is working its way through the counties. It was approved by Holton County earlier this month. It's on the agenda for recovery county next week. So we are getting that advertisement queued up so that we can get that, that those bids to, to start coming in for that project.
Okay, any questions for President Chuck Millis?
Greg, I've seen in the paper that basketball coach.
Jay Gell?
Yeah.
Yeah, he is, this is, he's stepping down after this season. No choice.
Right.
His decision to, to move on. We are currently looking at options.
Okay. Move on to student trustee report. If you're not here tonight. So we'll move on to the foundation report. Trustee, Gus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Heidi Rager, Project Director of Liberty Engineering and Land Surveying. Their job is complete. And now the next is Kenny Geotechnical Engineering. Their job is to give us information on the laboratory testing result, voting logs and as well as analysis of the subsurface condition encounter. Foundation is still moving toward, toward determining the final cost of place one of this project. And next item, Prilla Gallery is the, which the artist is very famous artist from Adirondack artists. His name is Bill Waiton and is closing their reception. I mean, the time is up. And then they have a closing reception on February 21st, from 5 to 7. If you didn't get a chance to visit the Prilla Gallery, you can attend that reception. Enjoy the gallery, the artwork, as well as some refreshment. Golf, Foundation Golf Tournament, 31st Annual Golf will take place at the Fox Run Golf Course on May 22nd. Already we, we all got the packet before they send the packet. Five, foursome is already reserved. And there's so many, we have so many early sponsors as well. As our chairman mentioned, if you want to play or you want to sponsor, we appreciate if you connect and get in touch with Foundation and register please and as well as supporting. Annual appeal is underway. And if you didn't get a chance to look at it and support it, would you be kind to support annual appeal as well? Last but not least, I have a new date for fifth Friday speaker, Chris Dancy, which is going to be on Friday, April 4th at 8 o'clock at the Allen House. With that, if there's no question, I can answer or Mrs. Landry can answer it. I conclude my report.
We have any questions? No. Thank you, trustee Gus. And we'll move on to treaty reports with finance, trustee Beck.
Well, you all received it in your packet and I'm sure you all took a look at it. I know I did. And Chastity guided me through something that I thought was wrong, but I was wrong. I read it wrong and she was right and it's good.
That's okay.
The truth. That concludes.
Thank you, trustee Beck. Any questions? Now we'll move on to our building rounds with trustee Landry.
We just wanted to point out one thing in your packet, like Greg has taken away from us. That the turf field project valuation of the site has begun and their mapping of the underground utilities is complete. And this is under review by our. And that concludes our report. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Landry. Do we have any questions? If not, we'll move on to academic affairs with trustee Preston.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to highlight in the nursing department. The weekend of January 23rd to 26th, FMCC's nursing instructor, Lisa Renina taught first aid basics to Cusco Pad 5 from Colesville, Richmondville, that would teach the scout survivors how to lead your first and, and have an opportunity to practice using those skills that they learn. Doctor Cindy Forrest will be mentoring Jordan Hannah, who is a graduate of FM. He's a master's in nursing education student that's starting March 3rd. He will be in the Linux Projective Labs Simulation and Meetings. In the Rad Tech Program, Darren Melagee C is one of three students accepted into the Work Learning and Therapy Scholarship offered by Catall Cardiology. Those recipients receive up to $25,000 in tuition assistance, a monthly stipend of $2,000 and reimbursement for hotel accommodations during the rotations, among other benefits. So congratulations. In the business community partnerships, there's an article in our packet in regards to the Hydromonics Lab Open House that was on January 7th. That was featured in the Times Union, as well as in the Leader Barrel, the Recorder and the Gazette in regards to the grand opening. And they're planning a tentative non-credit community class in the spring and will share details and dates once confirmed. So that is great to see all of that positive news. And also that team partnered with HBCC to host a free symposium on January 8th to educate employers about hiring and supporting justice impacted individuals reentering the workforce. That event featured expert discussions, reentry simulate, simulation and actionable insights for reducing stigma and creating opportunities for all community members. So again, another great program that's happened here. I think that's it. And again, that Times Union article is in the pocket. I encourage everyone to read it and spread the word. That's my report.
Thank you, trustee Preston. Any questions? Now we're going to move on to the student affairs. Aline, you're up.
Again, you can read the whole packet, but a couple of highlights. Our admissions counselor, Luna Franco, attended a college and career day at SUNY Delhi on January 30th. She made presentations to over 50 high school sophomores and juniors to talk about FAMO programs, athletes and student life. Our academic success coaches are busy. They've been assigned six sections of freshman English 1 and two sections of CIS 105. These coaches work directly with faculty to support students on course assignments and offer support in person during the courses. This is part of our Title III grant retention initiative that was mentioned there. And middle school students at the Liberty Partnership Program engagement activities that honor our 13 junior day. They explore the legacy and the importance of its contributions to civil rights, culminating, culminating in the creation of I Have a Dream rainbows. Additionally, the LPP staff participated in comprehensive training themed braided lives. These sessions emphasize the interconnected strands of socio-emotional development, academic engagement and community development. Finally, it's not in the packet, but we have breaking news this week with our partnership with Family Counseling Center. We're now offering a 24/7 hotline for any member of the campus community who wants to speak with somebody for emotional support or help with a crisis. So the number is 855-512-5599. And we'll be starting to promote it campus-wide. But this of course supplements the on-campus mental health support that we currently offer Monday through Friday. We are also with our partnership with the family councils. So it's a great supplement to our services for, for families. And just to save the date, our open house is Saturday, April 26th.
You have any questions for Aline? Now we'll move on to Mr. You had further inclusion, John?
Good evening, everybody, and thank you, Aline, for setting social and cultural education. That is my favorite word, words. I remember that personally, if you interview actors, maybe those ask what's your favorite word? That'd be my, I'd say, I appreciate that one. Let's see, well, as Greg said, there's a lot coming on in the world here within terms of diversity and certainly a lot of uncertainty. And one of the things, when I attended the recent convening down in Albany, we spent a day on athletics and medicine. And the other day it was largely centered around how people, you know, with uncertainty, which really tends to include people. Yeah, mentally and physically. So we're trying to support people with that. One of the things we're doing is with the thing Peace Club, we've sort of opened that up to a safe space for people. Because a lot of people who are at minority status at this point are experiencing a great deal of stress, which I think from a socioeconomic perspective, there are impacts that are with weight or their ability to do an education. At this point, it's hard to get that when you have a lot of anxiety. Some depressive pieces going on here. Let's see. Oh, a little interesting part of this is the sample living club with the happiness and health class. We're focusing a lot on happiness and health. One of the things that really came up was Amsterdam, downtown Amsterdam is really a food desert. And they talked about that quite a bit and the effects that that has on people. And if you look at it demographically, higher obesity rates, higher type 2 diabetes rates. And one of the interesting things is years ago, what was the old diner that was down there? Who else? Yeah, December 1st line was going to redo that and make it into a sliding scale grocery. And eat it, eat it every, I thought if anyone has any grant writing skills, feel free. Because that really does seem to be a real, a feed down in that area. They also talked about noise and the effects that that has on people. And that goes in with sleep. More and more research is kind of oversleep deprivation. And again, this ties in with stress and how that affects people, you know, air quality, things like that. We've been talking about, of course, race and gender, how that affects people. Black History Month, as you know, next month is Women's History Month. We had Random Acts of Kindness this weekend. I gave extra credit for a class committed five acts of kindness. And if you do that today, it's much better than if you do it over a week. And there's actually a lot of neurological research out there about how that changes people's brains too. So it's kind of some of the stuff that we've been doing. Other than that, if you have any questions?
Any questions for John? Thank you, John. We'll move on to accreditation. Dan?
So we're about closing phase one for first phase of our accreditation efforts and getting ready to move into a second phase. So the final report and the submission of that report. the final report and the submission of that report will be happening within days. We're in the final review process, just dot our Is, crossing our Ts, making sure the evidence is in line and getting that loaded into the Middle States portal, like you said, within within days. Once that final report is finalized, we will certainly get that to the board for for your review. In regards to when when you see that final report and and areas that would affect the board specifically or even in generally would be standards one, two, six, and seven. So they would be the college's mission and goals, ethic ethics and integrity, planning resources, resources and institutional improvement. And then standard seven is governance, leadership, and administration. So again, when when that report is finalized, we'll be sure to get it to you all, of course. And we'll be happy to answer any questions, go over any parts of the report, or the report as a whole, whatever you guys, you know, kind of require and and, you know, would be interested in. So like I said, that report will be will be finalized very, very soon. We also have campus workshops underway. So we've done two. We've got another one tomorrow. We've divided them up by standards against seven standards in in the in in the self-study, the accreditation process. And we're inviting specific people to those workshops. They are, of course, open to the whole campus community. But we're inviting specific people either because their job is directly related to that standard. I like to say that they're not a lot of talk titles, right? They're going to want to talk to the VP of Finance. They're going to want to talk to the college president. But another way that people are getting invited to those workshops is that in those standards, we may have used an example or a piece of evidence from their area or their department. So just wanted to, A, make them aware of that. And then B, kind of get them prepped, not kind of get them prepped for being able to step into a meeting in April and being able to to talk about what what's in that report, what's in that standard. In regards to the visit, the visit is again, April 6th through April 9th. So a Sunday evening to a Wednesday morning, Wednesday afternoonish. Falca that work as far as interviews and meetings, things like that happened on that Monday, Tuesday. So the 7th and the 8th. Prior to that visit, we will have a what we're calling a mock visit. And that will be on March 11th and 12th. Same idea, same concept. Get some people in here to coach us up, if you will, put us through our basis, get us ready for the actual visit in in early and early April. So the agendas for both of those visits are being developed right now. And then, as President Chuck Miller mentioned, as the ALO, I did receive a communication from Middle States in regards to the Department of Education letter, what they're calling the Dear Colleague Letter, and, you know, these efforts that that we had outlined earlier in the meeting about executive orders and the like. So Middle States is basically going to issue some additional guidance in the next, what they say, several weeks, but, you know, our our visit is in the next several weeks. But what they're basically telling us is, in an effort to protect our institutions and their students, our commission reiterates that they will not require or expect an institution to run afoul of any applicable laws through accreditation activities. They wanted to assure us that commission standards, requirements, policies, and procedures will in no way inhibit our ability to comply with any laws in any jurisdiction. And so for it to that end, what they've kind of indicated to us in this communication is when that team comes and writes their reports, issues their their reports, their peer their peer evaluators may use the following statement as needed for each standard and criteria listed in Appendix A. And for us in the the version of of the standards that were under the 13th edition, we're really talking about standard two and eight and in standard three and two specific areas in in those standards. So one deals with a climate that fosters respect among students from a range of diverse backgrounds, ideas, and perspectives. And the other talks specifically about cultural and global global awareness and cultural sensitivity. So in regards to those standards, when when the peer evaluators write their report, they could use the following statement, which is, "In light of recent executive orders, Dear Colleague Letter and other guidance prohibiting diversity, equity, inclusion in institutional operations, the institutional, the institution is not reporting on this standard criterion, as doing so has the potential to cause conflict with standard two criteria eight, which is compliance verification, compliance with with federal and or state law." So again, that that statement relates to two very specific places in in the standards. But our team members will be able to use that statement if they so so choose, if they so that it's necessary at that time of the day.
We're screening down the question.
When you have a mock, you know, the people that you are having did over, you choose or they choose for you?
Uh, no. So we have quite a, and my assumption was was a bit inaccurate. Are you asking who who attends those? Yes, yes. So so we have a lot of control over who will sit in on those on those mock visits, on those mock interviews, pleasantries, if you will. And if you think about it, which took me a little bit of time to think about, they don't know who the the chief diversity officer is. So if we've used an example that relates to to diversity or what the chief diversity officer does on example or on campus, we will be using John, you know, in in those interviews. So again, you know, they know they're going to want to talk to the president. It doesn't matter who the president is at that time. But other offices or interaction or, you know, people on campus, we will be sending those people forward. And that's really why we're doing those workshops and trying to get people aware of.
For the final one, they already assigned somebody to come, or you don't know, really?
Yes, yes. So we have a we have a team in place. There's been a couple of changes to the team. So that actually reminds me that I should get you the composition of the board, the composition of that team.
So much.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Dan. We'll move on to personnel with trustee Shimmer McGee.
Not much to report. We had a reservation in the third position, hiring a new librarian, as the president pointed out, and just a couple of job openings that are still up here. It's my fault.
Thank you. Questions for trustee Shimmer McGee? If not, we'll move on to the fit center and their policy. Mr. Wilson.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have a I'd have emotionally gone to the executive session to discuss contractual business with President Chuck Miller. spoken by trustee Preston, segmented by trustee Gass. Y'all goes to favor.
Hi.
All appearing none. All appearing none, sorry.
I have a little fractal, so I have to.